Also, we have a resignation from our environmental commissioner clerk. She really didn't even get into a meeting yet, but unfortunately she couldn't do it. She's asking that I would like to take the opportunity for you, the opportunity of being the environmental commissioner's clerk. Thank you for the opportunity of being the environmental commissioner's clerk. Unfortunately, I'm going to have to resign, and that's Tamara Niagrosi.
Move to accept or regret the resignation, Tamara Niagrosi, for the environmental commission.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just a heads up on this, we regret because we don't want anybody else right now to put their meetings. So we have to find somebody who's going to be willing to...
Just bridge in on this. Some of the commissions have their own secretary from within. It's a voting member of the body that serves as secretary. Ryan, I need a legal opinion whether that will be acceptable for environmental if they have one of their own members serving as the secretary.
I'd have to check the law with the board.
Check the law. And the other thing, sometimes the commissions didn't be able to get in on this building on their own. Do we have to do something to authorize them to have access to the building? We have not done so in the past, but yet sometimes there's not a member of the staff here in the building, sometimes the license is not available, and yet the group still wants to meet, whether it's historical, environmental, cable. Ryan, can we have a decision on that next month? Yeah.
Okay. And we'll talk amongst ourselves and balance any concerns we have with that. Okay.
It takes the talent to be the secretary and a member of the board because you're interacting and not taking down the oats, and you take down the oats and not interacting.
I believe the environmental commission, aren't they recorded?
They are.
They're recorded there.
But then somebody has to transcribe it.
I understand. Oh. And you guys don't do that, that's what Niagrosi did?
Correct, yeah. And asked all the other clerks in your building.
Moving on to the renewal for the alcoholic beverage license in Niagara Falls Country Club, there's actually two of them.
Is this just received, not filed, no objection?
As long as the board doesn't have any objections, you can let the state liquor authority know if you have any issues with these particular establishments, but other than that, there's no action.
I'll read this real quick. This is a notice that a renewal for an alcoholic beverage license has been applied for by the Niagara Falls Country Club, 505 Mountain View Drive, Los New York, in the County of Niagara, for on-premises consumption at the clubhouse and for on-premises consumption at the patio.
No objections?
No objections. Any objections?
No.
Okay. The school resource officer agreement.
That said, no cost to us, I move for approval.
Correct. It is, Ryan, you want to address it?
The intent of the agreement is that the Niagara Weetfield School District paid for all costs associated with the employment of that police officer. I believe it's the department's intent to hire a new police officer to fill that position. It would start September 1st, and there's two agreements for the board's consideration. One is with the Niagara Weetfield Central School District setting forth the terms of the agreement whereby the school district pays for the costs associated with this new officer. The second agreement is with the union. Because of the nature of this type of job, or the school resource officer position, some of the terms of that officer's employment would be different than what's set forth in their collective bargaining agreement with regards to assignments, overtime type work, hours in the day, that sort of stuff. So the second agreement is with the union in order to have them sign off that they're okay with this, not going to grieve us because the workday's nine hours opposed to eight hours, those sorts of things.
Agreed. Clarification, it's not an additional person, it's an officer being reassigned?
No. We are hiring a new officer. This contract is for how many years, Frank?
Four.
Four years.
Brand-new officer?
Yeah.
Actually, we're looking to move a part-timer into that position.
But it is a new officer. But I know Ryan, and I got to give him credit, they've worked back and forth every possible scenario where there would be costs to the town, Weetfield's going to cover it. And I feel very comfortable in the several meetings we've had with Mr. Wolanovich from Weetfield that they'd be more than happy, if something popped up that wasn't covered somehow or some way in that contract, that they're going to, you know, even if he goes out six covered, that if we have to replace him or not replace him, it's all covered. So, yes, I am, and I believe the chief is, because the chief obviously sets his budget, and he doesn't want to incur any costs, so...
There's also language in the agreement clearly setting forth that the intent of the agreement is that Niagara Weetfield School District will be paying all costs associated with the position. There's also outward provisions too. So if at some point we don't like the way it's going, or if they try to put a cost on us that we don't believe is us, we can cancel, we can terminate the contract upon notice.
If someone happens and if we cancel that contract and you have a four-year contract with the officer?
It's not...
There's no contract with the officer.
It's a four-year position or it's a four-year contract? Is that what you were saying was four years earlier?
That's the agreement with Niagara Weetfield.
I understand. Okay, so four-year agreement, not necessarily four-year contract with the officer?
Correct.
Fair enough.
Would be adequate to say, move for approval of the agreement for the school officer...
School resource officer.
I think we need to, because there's two agreements here, I think we need to specify which agreements we're talking about, and then two for each one. One authorizing the town to enter into the agreement, and then the other one...
Oh, it's one chair.
Authorizing the supervisor to sign it, yes. So we can do the year agreement first, really.
Make a motion to approve the contract for the school resource officer with Niagara Weetfield School District.
And this one I am going to make subject to attorney approval and execution of the agreement with the union, because the agreement is to the union. I don't have, I do not have a signed agreement back from them, so that's why we're making it.
Subject to attorney approval and the contract...
And execution of the agreement between the town and the union.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign the...
Set agreement.
Set agreement.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the contract with the union...
The agreement with the union.
Agreement with the union...
Regarding terms of employment...
Regarding the school resource officer. For the Niagara Weetfield School Officer.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion authorize the supervisor to execute the agreement with the union regarding the Niagara Weetfield School Officer.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And a police department hire. Chief Prebet?
Regarding those, do you want me to hand, do both issues?
Sure.
The first would be for the school resource officer position. We interviewed two of our current part-time officers. It has to be off the civil service list, so I'm limited as to who we can interview. And we interviewed two officers for that position, and it's my recommendation that we hire Officer Rob Rucci, who's currently part-time as a school resource officer for that position with Niagara Weetfield School.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any questions on it? All in favor?
Aye.
The second issue would be, we have vacancies, and I'm looking to fill three part-time positions. They are already existing positions, we're not adding any more again. So it would be relatively low cost. The only thing that I might have to provide is equipment stuff here and there if something doesn't fit. One of our officers was currently taken, received the job with the New York State Police. He's currently in the academy now. Another of the officers with us part-time has received a full-time position with Niagara Falls Police Department, and she will be leading for Niagara Falls Police Department. She's already hired there. And the third officer would be to fill the part-time position created by Officer Rucci moving to a full-time position. The, again, we've done interviews for those, I can, I get more applications for employment that I can tell you. One of the things that we look at is, they have what's called a phase one and a phase two. So the officers, what happens if somebody's interested in becoming a police officer, they can pay for phase one, which takes a big chunk of training off of the table. They do that at Niagara County Law Enforcement Academy at Niagara University. We interviewed three people for those, actually more than three. The three that I would like to recommend are Charlene Rakowski, she's currently part-time at the Niagara County Law Enforcement Academy, she's summer help and works there. She's recently graduated phase one. Jonathan Emmons, he is with Adams Fire Company and also has completed phase one of the academy. And Marissa Benito, who is actually a town resident as well, she lives on Raymond Drive, and also completed the phase one of the academy. And that would be my recommendation for those two officers.
Make a motion to hire Charlene Rakowski, Jonathan Emmons, and Marissa Benito.
Benito.
Second. With a motion second, any questions on the issue?
No. Our time, the rates and salaries are all pursuant to your...
That's pursuant to the contract. They would all start at the lowest pay for part-time officers coming in.
Okay. With a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Sometime we tell them to stop by and say hello.
Yes, they absolutely will. I'd like to start doing that, especially we don't usually get this much turnover. Again, I'm happy for them. I'm sorry to lose them because we're losing good officers, but I can't fault them for moving on to full-time work somewhere as well. But I'd like to set something up when we do that, especially if we have a bunch to bring them in either to a board meeting.
Absolutely, especially the new ones.
Yep, absolutely.
It would really be nice to have them.
I could do that for next board meeting, I'll have them stop in, I'm sure they'd love to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have a water issue.
Everybody got an email on this, for Ridge Road, Wedge residents, and I would refer to Mr. Catalano in regards to this.
I have addressed this issue with this Wedge on two separate occasions through, excuse me, three separate occasions through correspondence. And then this, my answers, I guess, were not to her liking, so she produced the letter to the board. What had occurred was, her basement was flooded during the time when we had those, sorry, her property was flooded during the time that we had the heavy rains. I spoke to both Mr. Ritter and to our town engineer to see if there was any responsibility at part of the town. Mr. Ritter sent someone out to the home, explained to her what the problem was, it was on her end. I put that into a letter, told her that we are not responsible, we would not be paying for the damages. I apologize for her losses, but she would have to pay for those herself, and that's what produced the letter to the town. As I said, I spoke to both Mr. Ritter and Ms. Lannan, and neither one believed that it was through, the fault of the town.
Mr. Ritter, you want to elaborate on that at all, or?
We had, every sewer was flooded around the whole town, town quarter, the village. We had over two inches of rain in a less than 24-hour period, and it was already soaked, the whole ground, water went to, took the path of least resistance. She didn't have a sub-pump or anything in her house. There was no basement in the house, so the water came up in the laundry room and unfortunately got on some new floors and she...
Am I correct, that when she was to sell her property, she will have to have an appropriate sub-pump?
She already had it installed.
She does, so now she needs code?
I'm not sure if she needs code or not, but we've got to go, she may have to put some kind of a valve in to keep the water from backing up. And under the new town code, you're not supposed to have any kind of drainage from her floor to the sanitary sewer. So if she was to sell the house, she would have to bring it up to code.
Okay. Okay, so there'd be no action on that?
No.
Okay. For agreement, rezoning request forwarded to planning board. So we have an application for rezoning?
Ultimately, what would have to happen is a local law would need to be passed in order to amend that zoning, because our zoning is within the code in the past. These types of issues have been sent to the planning board, so they can take a look at it and see if a rezone would be appropriate for these particular parcels.
Make a motion to refer to...
So right now, the section that he's referring to is zone R1. And he wants to put in penny homes for R2.
Correct.
Correct. And this abuts the coach houses in Ridge.
Be on the north side of North Ridge Drive between Legacy and Eddy.
Which basically is very close to meeting an agreement that was originally passed 20-some years ago when this project started.
Yep. There actually is a plan in my office from the early 2000s, but it didn't go anywhere.
Well, in the early 2000s, would it have met the R1 requirement?
At that point in time, what they, it looked like on the map, they were going to do like a zero lot line townhouse, but now what he wants to do is do a two-family patio on the single lot, which would require R2 zone.
Just move to send it out to the planning board for the review.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tim, I spoke to you about a change. You said that you wanted to put a pool over there?
Yep.
Is that something that'll be coming before the board?
Okay.
To be honest with you, when I saw it, that's what I thought it was.
We actually have three things that will come ultimately, changing from the gazebo to a pool in a clubhouse is one of them, then sight plane, if this gets changed for R2, it'll become a back for sight plane for the town.
Okay, thank you. And now we have Brian Christmas here filling in for Dave Train, a drainage issue up on Route 31. We all have the, I've spoken with the gentleman, the resident there, I've spoken to Dave Train numerous times. Brian, you want to elaborate on it, please?
It's a collection system that originates off of Route 31 closer to Hewitt Drive subdivision and off to Brookside, crosses there and goes to the Gill Creek. The town we're occurring constantly is what makes it matter to be turned. So if we put a catch basin on the south边的road, which be all on the right-of-way, such a tightness be all right-of-way, would leave a small section of opening across this yard which we can't access because it's private property. That would be probably installed there, that would be continuation all the way to Gill Creek and alleviate a lot of the block.
So as you can see by the pictures, it's a unique situation, runs directly through his property. It seems like a no-brainer, but we wanted to present it to the board to make sure everything was on the up and up, because town employees will be on private property doing work, but it will be work that's beneficial to the town. Because the gentleman says, well, if nothing's going to be done, he's going to fill it. It runs across his property, and we don't want that to happen. So in talking to Dave Train, he could fill it, and that's just going to lead us to more problems down the road.
Right. Do we need any documentation to proceed with this?
Like an easement?
Would you mean easement ultimately?
Sure.
Do we need an easement?
I commend... Do we need an easement or just an agreement to access the property to do this work?
Agreement first, easement.
Because he's more than willing to do that. I mean, it's a small section.
We're going to need access to it, and we're going to need to...
What are they actually doing on the process?
You're going to put in a drainage pipe and fill it in, but it's not through the ditch. It's actually, Brian, if you want to, Ryan, you want, do you have the pictures? It's a pipe that basically goes right across his property. In the, on page two, yeah, well, the pipe starts on this property, then it's a ditch. So if you look on the top of page two, it's a ditch on his yard, it's not next to the road, it goes diagonally right through his property.
Drainage.
Yes. Okay. So what we need to do is make a motion to get a drainage easement, or is there really a motion?
My assumption would be that we would need an agreement with the homeowner to do the work, the scope of the work, which would also include the forming of an easement after the work is completed. All part of the same agreement, so I defer to our legal department for now.
Okay.
And maybe between the highway department and then Ryan can come up with a scope of work.
And again, this is to benefit the town, because it would be a mess if he decided to fill that property, refilling the ditch up.
Brian, on the other side of the ditch, what is there? Does it just go right into, you say Gill, Fish Creek?
Gill Creek.
Gill Creek. Right, it continues down on the north side of Brookside, so it comes to the rounded area that crosses the gap.
How long of a drainage pipe would we be putting in here?
After the right-of-way, then we have a pipe for around 25 feet, or 24-inch length.
And then who owns the property on the other side of that 25 feet?
It's all, it's all right-of-way, there's a, not our homeowner, but that's already tight through his existing driveway that exits his property out to this next property.
So goes into an existing easement?
Right, and all covered up.
Okay, that makes sense. So don't actually take it there?
Just refer to, make over.
We try to get this done in two weeks, all the documentation, this project.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Video recording the equipment, RFPs for Councilman Guyden.
Well, I just commend Dr. Alonzo for all the work that he has done in putting this together, and we have differences of opinion as to how we can go about purchasing this, whether or not it has to be all listed on one affidavit submitted to these businesses or their quote back to us. Our attorney is saying we need to have three quotes.
Three bids.
Three bids, and Dr. Jim has been piecemealated to get better prices. And we have the better prices now in front of us. If we put together as one bid, we might get a better price, or we might get, company says, well, I can't do it the way you're asking. So we're in the limelight. This is something that needs to be, we need to move forward on. Our attorney is very strong about the way that he believes it needs to be done for the New York State procurement policy. We've had different situations in the past that we have done it different ways, because it doesn't necessarily all bundle together neatly. So we're in the limelight. I was very disappointed in the article that was in the Gazette today in regards to the topic. What the Alliance Group wants to do with its camera is fine, no problem, but when board members are quoted or commission members are quoted and it's inaccurate, it gets very confusing. What an independent group can do with procurement, that's their business. What we have to do for procurement is complicated. It's just not something you can slam bang and get it done. We need to move forward with this. We have the money, we have the desire, we need to be able to buy the equipment. How are we going to get there, guys?
We will figure it out.
Sort of refer to legal right now?
Yes. I will figure out how we can do it. Maybe we don't have to do it as one, but the way it's here now, we can't do this. What's in front of me now can't be done. We can figure it out.
I'm anxious. It's becoming a sensitive issue to me.
Okay. So we'll table that, and then moving on to, we'll stay with Councilman Guyden on the art fest?
On Saturday, I was invited to the art council, they had a little reception showing off some of the art pieces, and the supervisor's not able to attend, and they presented us with standing ovation, town listed plaque. And this is the, what the artist presents, their T-shirt and everything, and we have a few of these, and I'm hoping that when the room gets redone, we can place them in a corporate place that people can see them. So this is for you.
Oh, thank you.
And I was asking about rules and regulations for our apartments, whether or not you can hang things like that, where it can be easily accessed and tossed.
This could be better utilized in the hallway. Yes. A few more people, because during the day, nobody comes in there, so, but thank you. And then Auctions International.
I had a couple of previously declared obsolete or access equipment go down Auctions International. I would like the approval, I would like the board to accept approval of these bids. The backhoe came in at $6,000, and the dump truck $4,650.
I got one, sorry, a question. So the backhoe, did you check with all the departments, nobody needs it?
Everybody's got a backhoe. It's 1979.
Just reading your talk, you said it was a nice piece?
It's a nice piece, but it's, we want to get rid of it, while we still can.
We have to replace a backhoe.
We have one, it's already been replaced.
Well, none of, I mean, say Highway needs another one. What do they, what do they run?
We didn't ask Highway, I don't know what one would run, brand new.
70,000. I would like to check with the other departments on the backhoe. The dump truck, it has no problems, but, you know, Highway needs one, we're going to have to come up with 70,000 if something is given a courtesy.
Brian, do you know the condition of our backhoe with the Highway garage?
Colonel, you don't have a backhoe.
Do we need one?
I'd have to refer that to the superintendent.
Plus, they come down and get ours if they need it. He hasn't been sharing, but, as we shared earlier, I make a motion to approve the sale of the dump truck at $650.
Take a second. All in favor?
Aye.
When do you need to notify Auctions International about the bid?
Tomorrow. It's been on there for two weeks. It's declared obsolete, I believe at the last word session.
Yeah. So...
It's just an expensive piece of machinery, another department could use it, whether water or...
The only problem is we're going to declare it obsolete.
But to Rob's concern, what Jeff was saying is that he runs the pits, which is workable right now. So we only have yours, and what other department has a backhoe?
I don't know, but we have one, that's all I know. I thought the Highway had.
Did it sold $50,000?
Declared it obsolete.
Yes.
It's been on our plate for...
It's been on Auctions International for two weeks.
Move to approve the sale of the backhoe as status.
Second, starting discussion, just, and I would imagine that, I wish Lieutenant Alonzo was aware of it too. I think he was here at that meeting when we declared it obsolete. I would have hoped that if he needed it, he would have...
And we do have one he can use, I mean, so...
Where does water, if they have one or no?
We have one, pardon my... You have to ask Brian, he would know.
Mr. Brian, I mean, a lot of times, it's cheaper to lease that equipment on an as-need basis rather than try to own it and maintain it, so, I mean...
I wouldn't be getting rid of this thing if it was being used, sat in the corner for 10 years and nobody used it.
All right. Okay. Wave a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The one thing we did forget, kind of, is the department had issues, real quick. Chief Prebet, anything you want to add?
Mr. Guyden asked for me to bring something, maybe you could preface it.
I got a call from a resident that my number was coming up on his caller ID, and when he picked it up to say, "Hello, Bill," it was a salesman that he had wanted to trip to someplace. And the term is spoofing, is that it? And it's first I have heard of this.
I'm going to take your word for it, I think you've been trying to sell.
It is spoofing, you're correct, and the technology is, there's two issues I'll use to kind of address that as well. Just be cautious, I have to tell everybody, be very cautious when you're getting phone calls from any number, because if you have the right technology, you can, I can place a phone call to you and make it seem like anybody's number. I don't know how they got Mr. Guyden's number to use that, but that's something that we get that occurs regularly. The other thing that I would like to address, is we did put it on our Facebook, there's a big thing going around right now with different types of scams. We've had all kinds of people that have called our department and asked us, and these are the only people, these are just the people that have noticed, and said, "Well, I got a call from somebody saying that they were the, from the Lewiston Police Association or the Lewiston Police Chiefs Association, which we don't even have, trying to solicit money." Just a reminder that we, as a department, do not call any residents asking for any money at any time, so if anything happens like that, it's probably a scam. And the other thing that I would tell you is, be wary of anybody that's calling you, asking you for money on the phone. If you think it's legitimate, and it's something that you're actually interested in, the best course of action that you could do a lot of times is ask for a physical number to call them back, and then try to verify, or ask for a physical address and look for a number for that address and call there, because they might give you a number and that's to a phone and just answer it the same way again. Just be very, be very wary. I can't tell you how many times we've taken reports where town residents have given up $5,000, $10,000 to somebody that they legitimately thought was calling for a certain purpose, and that money's just... and that money's just gone. The other thing is, be wary of anybody, and believe it or not, you wouldn't think that I'd have to say this, but you do, be wary of anybody that's calling and telling you to go get money orders and send that to them in lieu of payment of something. That's not how most places do business, and if they do, I'd be very skeptical. If you have any questions, the best, the best thing I can tell you is, hang up. If you think it's something that's fraudulent, before you take any action, call us and we can help you with it as well. But that is a very legitimate concern, the phone numbers now, like I said, even the phone numbers that you're getting calls from, you can't rely that that is actually the phone number that's calling you anymore. That's where technology has come.
Real quick, Chief, real quick, how does the PBA, how does Lewiston PBA fundraise?
Send out letters.
They do?
Yes.
Okay, no phone calls?
It'll be letters on stationery that says, we have a, it used to be called the Social Club, but it's more of a benevolent association. We make, within the department, we have an organization, we give out scholarships to the schools and fund different things, give to the community. That comes out of the officer's checks where we, where we give money to that. The only time that they solicit anything is through a letter, where they'll do like maybe once a year to raise funds for the scholarships and certain things. And again, if you think it's, that's might be in question, call us and we can let you know. We don't do it throughout the year and we never make phone calls.
We had a situation where a person kind of calls us and the person on line says, can you hear me? You say yes. And that becomes a verbal authorization for something. So when I get any calls in my house, my first response is, who's calling please? And it's when they start blah 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 blah, thank you very much, not interested.
I hang up right away. I don't even give them that. If they call up and say something, the one time I told, the only other deterrent that I can tell you is they called me and told me I wanted a trip to Disney World, I told them I was under house arrest. And I couldn't leave the state and they hung up on me right away, so. But that is, that's true. What they do is, they get you to say yes, and when you answer yes, they record your, your voice. And they'll use that for verbal authorization. If you call, if they call someone else and pretend to be you, they do that as well. Yes?
Whatever happened to the New York do not call list?
That's a good question.
I registered three phones with it and I can't tell you how many numbers I blocked and they looked like they're Lewiston numbers.
Right.
And I blocked the caller and deleted the call.
No, that's a, that's a good question. And they make it, and that, the one, and I guarantee you, they're probably not Lewiston numbers. And the times that we've had these, it's the most frustrating thing that I can tell you, to try to investigate them, because the phone numbers are never good. So even when we try to track them back and try to call them back or try to track them down, they go to nowhere and they change those numbers sometimes, especially with the advent now, where you can just go get a cellphone and keep it for a month and pay for your minutes and then just throw that out and get another one.
Can the town send a letter to Mr. Paul? Please, somebody, can you do it?
Mr. Guyven has some information on that.
I did some research on it. And now, your calls are not coming from New York State. And if you have any sort of connection with a certain agency, I have a credit card, so credit card calls me, I must get five calls a week, that you have to lower your credit rating or your...
Interest rate.
Interest rate, blah blah blah. And I called it to play, just, well, do you have a credit card? Yes, well, then there's a connection there, so it's legal. But I called New York State, I've called, I've talked to the congressman about it, it's so annoying. You're, I paid for my phone, I should not get harassed by these people all the time.
It was in the news last week, it really was, and they said they do not call us, this isn't perfect, they just, do not call us.
A lot of those, a lot of those, believe it or not, are not even coming from within the country.
Thank you, Chief.
Solar, I have a meeting scheduled with Bill and Tim last week. I was unfortunately, I got, I was unable to make it, so we're rescheduling that meeting, getting all the comments together, and it's just a matter of putting together the final draft for the board's review. I'm hoping they have time to do it this week or next week, where we can sit down and talk about...
We also have a moratorium on another bio fertilizers.
Yes.
And how's the other court case going on that?
Silent.
So maybe we should just go ahead and pass our law?
Well, I started working on it, I just wanted to hold out as long as I could, make sure that nothing happened from Wakefield, because theirs was pretty, it was good lots. Yeah.
Okay, Mike Dash, you know anything?
Yeah, I put two things on your desk. You don't really need any action. First one's, we have a vacancy in the Parks Department. I gave you guys some information for consideration for next meeting, changing the position file. So if you could put that on the agenda for next meeting, I appreciate it, take a look at it. And then the other one is just an update on the ashtrays in the green space Lewiston Town Park, or I'm sorry, Lewiston, Lewiston Town Park development. We are out to bid on that, the closing on that is August 25th, and I just gave you the next steps on there after that.
Does supervisor, do you have a group discussion?
Go ahead.
That surveyor that you had moved first, we're talking, would he machine survey all the way through those green spaces and determine if people have encroached on the greenway? And then we need a long-term solution on how we can either get the property back or dispose the property to this people. It's a big issue.
We, I mean, I went out today and I walked the backyard and I saw four buildings that were in town green space. My solution is to send every resident out there a letter stating that they need to get their, everything off of our greenway, or off of our green space.
My solution was sell the property.
And I guess the last time they did...
There's some fixed items on there.
Yeah.
The trees are the issue, and the trees are, they're property or our property?
That would be easy to determine. Well, the problem is, is when they've encroached on the green space, yet the trees that we're cutting down and paying for are in their backyard now because they've encroached on the green space. So it seems kind of, well, but then if we say, we're not going to pay to take these trees down, we're kind of saying, okay, that's not your property. So what Councilman Guyven is saying is that it, could we, I mean, the problem with selling this to them is, whoever's encroached the most gets the most property, I mean, it's there, and I know there was people that came out and were adamant that they don't want to buy the property behind the house, they moved there because it was a green space, and they don't want anybody else buying it. So I know when they talked about it years ago, it was a real, I mean, to me, sending a letter telling them to get their stuff off our property is the way to go.
When that was the state of the art concept for development thirty years ago, was wonderful. By the time Lewiston subdivision was two-thirds way, they abandoned it. We had problems with people putting furniture out there, having little campfires, couches. And one of my friends has a garden on it, I go and I pick, says, if that's not property, I won't have a tomato.
From what I understand, somebody has made a small green where they're chipping on our green space. This is... Yeah. So, I mean, you know...
We could, we could look, you know, research a particular property, find out what the survey is, and then go mark the pins or mark the property corners and then on one side of that or the other.
Mike, you laugh, you want to, because I know Mike's been working on this diligently. Go ahead, stand up, give us your take. You got something?
I, just, this is, what we've been doing for the last long time now is just getting the property lines, measuring out, using every, everything at our disposal to do that. We have residents that pulled those property pins, a lot of them. We have permanent structures that are, that are in the green space. It's, it's, it's not about going to look at one property. I would say, just spending the last year in this green space, the majority of houses have encroached in some way or another on the green space. The majority. Whether it's just mowing the grass around it, or actually putting a physical structure in the green space, or using it for just an insane number of different things. There's tree houses in the green space.
I think the problem is, is once we find the information of what we do with it, that's, that's where the real dilemma comes, because once we know that there's a permanent structure, there, there really is only, there are, there are only two options. It's either get it off or we knock it down.
Or we...
We have a backhoe.
Yeah. I think we should put an amphitheater out there and hold concerts and...
Concerts in green space?
Okay, yeah, so...
I've talked to plenty of residents out there and told them, this is what's going on. I would assume that, once the bids come back and we decide we're full with the project, the next thing we're gonna have to do is send some sort of notification to these, these people and basically tell them, if you have anything in the green space, it's going to be damaged. That might be, it's going, this is a big project. You're gonna have a lot of trees coming down, it's, whatever they have back there is going away. That's the bottom line.
The other thing that's baffling to me is people who've encroached in the green space with structure, fence, and as you described today, trees are not in the fence, but ahead of the fence, just outside. If we're gonna pay to take those down, we gotta, we're gonna have to tell them to take the fence down. I mean, I don't see how we pay, but then if we don't, and say it's your responsibility, they're gonna say, now it's my property. So that's the catch 22.
Didn't trade it, I went to one property where we were trying to get the back and two neighbors had to put their fence so that the space opening was about this wide. How do you get a piece of equipment through there? So somebody's encroaching on that entrance way.
There's, there's access points, it's just different access. The access points aren't generally between the properties. There, for each green space, there should be two access points coming off the road. We shouldn't have any problem getting to access any, any part of the green space.
This one's, the property had the, the storm swat.
Okay, something to, something to work on. Okay, thanks. So we'll move on to the open, open microphone, residents' statements. Pollitt Glasgow.
On your desk there, we put a letter with regards to the art, the gentleman who presented tonight. We are asking like we did last year, to put what he presented tonight on your website. And I would imagine that there's going to be an executive summary.
Well, the financial statements will come out at the end of August.
We would like that to be put on the website also.
The financial statements will be. They have never authorized us, because this is their property.
Well, you're paying for it, Marty, it's your property.
Yeah, I know, but that, that's always been an issue and why that hasn't been, I mean, I could care less.
Okay, so then we, I mean, the way I was always taught...
We'll look into it.
The way I was always taught, if you pay for it, it's your property. Okay, the second issue is unrelated and it relates to a comment that Mr. Guyven just made about Mr. Joe's article. And he said that part of that was not substantiated about the cable commission person. I was the person who asked John Sharp, had he seen any RFPs or any advertisement? He said no. So I was the person, and it was two weeks ago. So, and I also put in a foil with this, with the clerk, and the clerk will verify that. There was none at that time, about approximately two weeks ago. But just to verify, Mr. Joe's article is absolutely correct. I was the person that asked Mr. Sharp. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Nancy Karia.
Don't want to beat a dead horse, but for goodness sakes, talk into the mics, you've heard it before. Some of you speak through your hand. Lean on it, think that your fingers will project your voice, it doesn't. People, the staff, and your legal has one microphone. Mr. Parisi, you have to practice speaking into the microphone, you do not. And the staff should have a microphone when you ask them questions. Out of respect for the people that attend these meetings, your constituents, we need to hear clarity, transparency, accountability. You've all run on that platform. Now exercise what you've said. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Karia. Rosemary Warren.
Well, you know, I'd asked that freedom of information, and number one was, how much did KeyBank charge? Now, of course, I didn't like the answer, but I sent to the controller's office and the New York State Power Authority Chairman, that whole freedom of information. Then I wrote down, and Terry's wonderful article, then I wrote down the side of that as I'm sending it to controller, New York State Power Authority Chairman. Wouldn't the town have known what KeyBank was going to charge? It made it sound like it couldn't, we, the town wouldn't know what KeyBank was going to charge until it was all, the residents, we have our vouchers, I'm still waiting for my white envelope. But anyway, that, see, I still think that would be the cart before the horse. You would be knowing what KeyBank's going to charge, you knew how many people in the town of Lewiston are getting their check or voucher, debit card, whatever you want to call it, and that you would know that ahead of time. If you didn't, that's poor business. You negotiate with KeyBank, you're giving them business. You would negotiate with them. Now, the other thing I sort of disagreed with Supervisor Rodrick saying was a one-time alman. I used to go to the House Committee meetings with Bill Ross and these other people. It was fifty years. We've only used up ten. And that, I was thinking afterwards, I, Pollitt and I shouldn't get a Peace Prize or Nobel Prize, but I wonder if any of you would have given us the vouchers if she and I hadn't kept after that? It just amazes me that would we have gotten $153? And I think, okay, so it took years for you to build it up, nobody ever said a thing. You might say, I didn't know about it. Well, you should know everything when you run for an office. That's the way I feel. Okay, so then now, you're still going to be getting more money, I figure, for another forty years. Are you gonna wait until it gets to be a million and then send us $153? I won't be here. Now, okay, you know, the police people, I mean, I'm not making fun of them, but when you're eighty-three, you got nothing better to read than your little police reports. This one was a good one. I should ride along with them. Okay, so Sandox in Lewiston, suspicious activity. Caller reported three parties skinny dipping, patrolled and by subject, I wonder who was on that patrol. Patrolled and by subjects who put their clothes on, that was nice, and call it a night. So I, as I said, I mean, no. I want to say one thing about the police though. I don't have a computer, and so I write a lot of letters. And on my letters outside, I call it siren prayers. Now, what do I pray? I want people to pray for the people where they're going and safety as they travel there.
Thank you, Mrs. Warren. Steve Lyle.
Two things. One, kudos to the Highway Department. When I drag my brush out, it's gone in twelve hours. And they did it again this morning. So, it's a nice service and they do it well. The other one regards the debit cards from the power authority money, and the question I have is, we've gone through all the, over the hoops and gone through the hard parts, does that mean next year we'll get them in January or February or March? And that's not a rhetorical question. You're shaking your head no. Or April, or May? Or are we not getting them next year?
About the $133?
Yes.
Well, are you finished?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. We can let Marty inside, right?
Well, there's a history here, Steve, that needs to be addressed. Marty, jump in and correct me if I'm wrong here. Originally, there was a credit given to your water bill per household, and that was determined that that was not the right way to do it by the powers that need. Then it was offered back to the public as a cash refund. That was done the one year. The next phase, we, how do we identify it?
Well, I think that initially it was a credit on the electric bill.
The electric bill.
But then the, they weren't equating it to the amount we were receiving, they were just giving a credit, and they overspent. And so that had to stop until they caught that up. Then they decided to go through the water bills, but NIPA has said, no, you can't do that. At that point, then the town tried to find a way that we could do it. The problem is, is a, it's a database that the town doesn't own. The town, what this is generated from is part of the NIPA agreement provides that they are giving, as the host agreement, we get an extra 6.5 megawatts of power that we then can sell and convert. The board, for various reasons, made the decision that they would give 3.0 megawatts to the residents, 3.5 to the town. About a year and a half ago, because this has become such a nightmare, and because it's a database we don't own, it's, nobody can agree how to do it, we, the board changed, the ultimate user of that 6.5... the, the, the ultimate user of that six-point-five megawatts is at the direction of the board. The board changed the use, the ultimate user to be the town versus the town residents. That was a decision that the board passed, uh, right after I got here. I, I was here for that vote. Um, and so it's up to the town now going forward. The, the money for the residents was already set aside, and I literally have worked for two and a half years to find a way to distribute it to the residents in a way that will, that NIPA will accept it, in a way that we can have a database for it. National Grid, when I first started, wouldn't talk to us about it. So, I mean, it, it's really been two and a half years of constant work on it. I mean, every week I've worked on it, it's not something that's ever been forgotten. Um, so my objective is to get what has already been allocated prior to the board's decision to make the town the ultimate user, and that money, we never changed to what that was used, so that is the money that we are distributing to the residents. The future revenue that comes from that is to the benefit of the town. Now, one of the things people need to understand is, they think of the town as being this separate entity. It's all your money. So we have to tax you for everything we spend. So by taking that money and using it for the benefit of the town, then we don't have to, we can use, pay for expenses that we would have to tax you for otherwise. So that's how the residents still receive the benefit, but you're not going to receive a check. Um, it's a database we don't own, we can't keep up with it, I mean, we have to buy it, we have, we have spent hours cross-checking it with our property addresses, so, you know, it, the objective is to get that one million dollars distributed. It will be distributed by the end of September, um, which is the date I've always said it would be, you know, that I thought it would be, hopefully it'll be sooner, but by the end of September. So if anybody doesn't have their rebate by the, by September thirty-first, that's the time to call KeyBank first. If you can't get satisfaction, then call the town, and I will follow up. But does that explain where that is?
Well, my concern is that if it doesn't go to the residents of the town, it goes to the town, it walks like a duck, whacks like a duck, and smells like an awful lot like a tax.
Well, I believe it was done in two thousand and fifteen. I, I was sitting in the, uh, in the audience at that time, and it was done to avoid the town tax that year, um, because I believe why they did it.
And if I'm not mistaken, it's applied towards municipal utility bills.
Well, it does pay, you know, it can, it pays for, um, it, it's kind of like a general order of business. It first applies to the utilities, it's what we use to pay for the roof for the WPPCC building, which was leaking like a sieve. It's what we paid to put on the roof for the senior center.
But those are, those are funds that would otherwise have to come from the general fund or other budgets.
Absolutely.
Energy, energy related.
It has to be energy-related expenditures.
And when we did that, I think that was the whole concept, was that, that the most equitable way to distribute the money was by applying it to municipal bills that would otherwise be, uh, paid for through the, by the taxpayer.
Well, that and just the impossibility of, I mean, look at the state and how they, you know, rebate, I mean, they're three years behind on getting the rebates for the property packs. I mean, you know, it's like, it's just not something that is easy to do. I mean, that's more, that's more vendors than we have in our whole accounting system. It'll break our accounting system to do that. You know, it's trying to find another way to do it and trying to find the equitable way to even distribute it at one time. But each time is, you know, it's, the cost would have to be taken in, or you can use the whole money for things like new windows at the senior center, you know, those things that we know we've got to do. That's why we've been working so diligently on the five-year plan, trying to find what the things the town, the infrastructure that this town so desperately needs and has ignored for the last twenty years, and trying to figure out what those alternative sources can be, so we can free up money for everything. I mean, it's, it's, it's a puzzle, it all fits together. There's, you know, people like to think that it's a simple answer, and it's not.
Well, and the problem also, that six-point-five watt, uh, megawatts, isn't producing the same revenue it was ten years ago, when gas isn't four-fifty a gallon and when your bills at home are down, that means what we're selling it for are way down, and they're way down. I mean, I know Marty was worried last year that the number we budgeted for that was even going to come to fruition. One, one, I don't know if it was a quarter...
It didn't.
It was negative in the one month, because we had to pay, you know, our, our fees and stuff like that, but it's way down. So it's not generating millions of dollars, not even close to, to...
It, it is covering in two thousand and seventeen, but we got, it's covering our electricity. It'll, and I, and I have personally been responsible for not spending it ahead of time and, and trying to plan ahead and then not having the revenue come in, I'm making the revenue come in and then figuring out what we can spend it for. And I have to take the blame for that.
Well, thank you, Marty. Um, Mike Rooney.
I have a four-page agreement. I don't know why you wasted your time typing the thing up. Tim, did you see that?
No.
And I know the supervisor did. This is the agreement on the sign. It says nothing.
You've got to be able to dislodge my copyright, but...
What I'm referring to, oh, the Sandborne, there is, the Sandborne Business Association. Sandborne is a hamlet that covers three towns within about five hundred feet. The Sandborne Business Association, in conjunction with the town of Lewiston, got a sign to advertise different functions in the area. Somebody has a blog about what goes on the sign, and basically was supposed to say that, affidavit, there can only be town Lewiston activities advertised. That doesn't even say that. So the sign was there, it's taken us five years to get the sign. It was up, now it's been replaced and moved. Mr. Went gave us permission to put the sign on his property, which is to the left-hand side of Cronin's garage on Route Thirty-One and Buffalo Street. Oh, we have to have a lease on the property? That's, that letter there says nothing about how many feet it has to be off the highway. It says it's twelve by twenty-five feet. Saying nothing that it's got to be forty-three feet off the center of the road. No. Right, Tim?
I agree.
You know those specs, though, like I do. Because we've had to measure them before. What that agreement is saying is that relatively speaking, the town is going to pay for everything out there, they're going to manicure the, the twelve-by-twenty-five-foot piece of property that the sign is going to sit on, and that the sign is being held respons, the town is being held responsible to keep everything perfect. That's now what it is, you know that, because both the supervisor and Bill Guyven come out to sit at those meetings and know what the sign is all about. So Mr. Went gets this letter saying he's got to sign, sign that, or the sign is going to be taken away. I don't think that's what it's all about. I think it's about helping one another out in the Sandborne area. If this Sandborne Fire Department didn't go over to Tops, because, "Oh, that's not my district, we got to wait for peaking to come off." If the police department didn't go to Community College, where would we be? Because it's out of their district. We have to wake up and understand what we're doing today and living in our communities. The sooner you do, and I believe everyone up there does, because I've known all of you too long, that if you think she's bad, I can come back with her more often.
I'm an angel.
Again, she's Sandborne. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, that'll conclude the Town Board Work Session. We are moving into Executive Session. I do not believe we'll take any action.
None of my part. Oh, yes, yes, there will be action.
Okay, so there may be action on one issue?
Uh, two.
Two?
Call me when I...
So there may be some action taken, so. I will... All in favor? All right. Thank you.